Next session here on the County's Last City Commission candidates. Candidates last few for a one-minute opening statement, then we'll ask questions. We'll get two minutes to respond and then about halfway through around 8:25 percent, I'll open it up to the public questions as well. And again, if you ask a question, please ask a question. Don't filibuster or make statements, please. Thank you. All right, we'll start off, since it's easy for me, with Commissioner Davis.
Good evening. I'm Trent Davis. I'm currently on the city commission. I was served on several citizen boards before I joined the commission, our city manager's commission, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Access TV, and the county board of health. The city commission is a place where you guys take the skill to be able to listen, understand what people are saying, not necessarily how they're saying it, and read and educate yourself to come up with what's best for the community and not necessarily how you feel yourself. Listening is the most important skill. I have lived in Salina for 24 years. I'm a physician as my day job, but I don't let that cross this job and vice versa. It's been a pleasure to serve so far. Thank you.
Is this one minute or two minutes?
One minute.
One minute. Cuts out half my notes right there. Chad Farber, I am a citizen of Salina, been living here for 10 years now. I love Salina, and that's one reason I'm running. Last time I ran for this position, I kind of had the idea that I wanted to give back towards the community. I wanted to give back to the community that was so good for my children, for my wife, and for myself. Now, a couple of years later, I've made a decision, I'm going to run to make a change, to affect a change, and there are some things that need to be changed. I think we heard a lot of things that need to be changed just a few minutes ago. Our city commission is a little bit different from that. There's, and hopefully we'll get a chance to talk about some of these things, but I think our tax burden is too great here in the city. We need to adjust that a little bit. I would love to get our city broken up into districts so every person could get a voice towards every election, and so that's one thing that I'd love to push toward, and I'm sure you'll hear more ideas coming up shortly.
Thank you. My name is Mike Hopick. I've been on the Salina City Commission for six years. I've lived in Salina for 44 years. By coincidence, I've been married for 44 years. My wife Polly is a nurse at a Salina Regional Health Center. I was in banking for 20-some years. I currently own Land Title Service. Raised three children in USD 305. Fortunate to have two of those that still live in this community, and that's part of the reason I ran six years ago and I'm running again. I guess my motto is, "It's all about our future," and I believe it's not about our future, but about our kids' future and our grandkids' future. So I have three of those that live here in town. My daughter and her husband work in the school system, and my son works with me. I think that it's important to have background, to serve on the city commission. Before I served, I also served on the Salina Airport Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, Salina Downtown Eaton, Salina Education Foundation, to give you an idea, to help, give me the background to help listen, to know, and have a feel for the community.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming. My name is Jerry Ivy, lifelong resident of Salina, Kansas, fourth generation. I have three kids, two son-in-law. They're all grown now and want to run for the city commission so that I can get back to the community. Some of my experiences, I've been on the planning commission for a year now, Heritage Commission. I've also served on Parks and Rec Advisory Board and several variations of school boards. Just thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Let's get started.
Okay, let's get right to it. First question, and Jerry will start again and go back the other way. Since 1960, Salina's population has roughly increased by 3,600 residents, or about 58 new residents on average per year. I know the city is working to increase housing that's available, but is there anything else that is or could be done by the city to make Salina a community that would be attractive to come to or want to stay? Jerry?
Definitely the housing, which is what's being worked on right now in the city. I've been following that, and they've also brought plenty of good jobs to Salina. We can continue to bring good jobs. I think retention is what we need the most. We need to keep the younger families here, the younger kids, and make it more attractive for them, whether that be, and we're doing a good job with the ball diamonds and soccer fields and making that more attractive. Downtown's a great place to hang out, and we just need to continue that. I think the main thing, though, is to retain what we have, keep people from wanting to leave, and then work on the housing and the jobs.
Okay, two minutes may not be enough to answer this question. As a commission, we've done a lot of work to bring new jobs to the community. We've worked hand in hand with the Saleen County Commission, Salina Airport Authority, the Chamber, to go out to Topeka and to help get funding to help with some of the businesses we currently have expand. Schwan's has expanded, they built an 800-square-foot new addition, and they're also adding on another addition. Kabota bought the Phillips plant, which is 700,000 square foot. They're already adding on a multiple-million-dollar paint booth. They expect to have 500 or 600 jobs added to the community here in the next five or six years. Two weeks ago, we announced that Pure Imagination's moving their company here from California. They're going to do a 58,000-square-foot building, $41 million investment. We hope to have up to 100 jobs, and those are going to be around, close to six-figure jobs, if not six-figure jobs in this community. So we've done a lot of stuff to try to bring new, more people to this community. To also do that, you have to have a quality of life. We've, you know, built the field house, we've done tennis courts, we've done the community theaters, been upgraded. You never know what's going to keep a young family here, so you have to have a broad range of things to keep a family here, and I think we've done a good job of that as a community. I think doing, upgrading the downtown. In my business, I see a lot of people that move to this community, and people that have moved back here, young families that were here 10, 15 years ago, that go, "Wow, I can't believe the transformation that's happened to this community," and they want to live here. And that's been great, and I think we'll continue to see that. Salina has a great quality of life. I think we'll see people with remote work. I think there's a good chance to move people to Salina from the east and west coast because it's nice to drive five minutes to work without 30 minutes.
This is, this population question has come up before, and this is one of the reasons that I dug into this a little bit. 3,600 people since 1960, that our population has increased. Can I give you a little more recent numbers? In the last 10 years, our population has decreased every year. Why is that? Why is that? There has to be a reason. And I know both of these guys who serve on the commission and have served a couple of terms, they're going to give you all the good things about Salina, and I'm not saying Salina doesn't have a lot of good things. It does. But there is still a problem where our population is not increasing. So we have to find out what that problem is. Housing is necessary, but affordable housing is necessary. When we're building $400,000 homes, that leaves out a whole segment of the population. When we're renting at $1,600 a month, that leaves out a whole segment of the population. Well, how do we get that to work? Well, as a commission, we can't legislate salary increases. It doesn't work that way. But you know what we can do? We can work on taxes. The tax burden in Saleen County is awful, and our current commission voted 5-0 to lobby our state legislators to not reduce the state food sales tax this past year. Sales tax is too high, our seniors are leaving, the tax burden is terrible, and as Mike mentioned, Mr. Hopick mentioned, quality of life, and quality of life involves so much. Crime rate is up, and although it's not the major crimes like we see in some countries or in some areas, crime rate is up. I would say morality is down, and that's evidenced by some of the statements I heard just a few moments ago. We have school board members that are denigrating the Bible and telling how bad the Bible is and how it's just as, they try to align it with pornography that they're putting in their libraries, there's a morality issue. And people are not going to move to a city when crime rate is high and morals are low. Our school system does need some work, and I hope you were paying attention during the school system letter or forum just a moment ago, a lot of money gets put into our school system, and we're not seeing the results when it comes to test scores, we're not seeing the results when it comes to our children staying in Salina as well. So I think Salina does need to change, and I hope we can find a way to increase our population.
I would say that in the era of rural flight, if our population is staying the same compared to other communities and rural areas, we're actually effectively gaining people. We don't have an Amazon here, we don't have a FedEx here. So as far as hitting a home run that's going to suddenly bring in 20,000 people, that's probably not going to happen. And we've had a 10- to 15-year plan to make the city more attractive to people, downtown, work on housing, education, it's not under the city commission, business expansion, the airport, business park. I always like to talk about 10-year plans and two-year terms. Everybody wants to accomplish everything in their term, hit the home run. That's not the way it works. We've taken the necessary first steps towards activities that down the road will net those people. You know, the population that we need are those 25- to 45-year-olds. A lot of our kids who moved away, how do we get them back? Or how do we attract someone else's kids to move here? Well, it has to be, yeah, you need jobs, you need housing, but the city has to be attractive. They need something to do. Most young couples, when they're looking at a new city, the first question they ask is, "What are the schools like?" I'm surprised by the number of people who tell me when they moved here what they really liked about the place, list of art downtown. Who would have thought? But we are, you know, we're taking those baby steps, but it's not going to happen overnight, and people we bring in have to be able to earn enough money so that we're not supporting 10,000 people that we're not supporting. Now, it's not just a simple matter of just getting 10,000 people to move here. It's a little more, well, it's a little more complex than what it seems on the surface. But we are moving in the right direction, taking small steps.
Okay, while it's not likely to be an issue, and I'm not for sure on this, that will come before the Salina City Commission, what's your position on the possible large solar farms near Salina and battery storage facilities near Salina? And Commissioner Davis will start with you. Two minutes.
I don't think I'm going to need two minutes for this. I am very much in favor of renewable energy sources. Sun, the wind are free, they go away, they got bigger problems than oil bills. Every city has to do what's best for it. One thing we have in Kansas is space, and if we can generate energy free of charge, we should. If it's an industry that earns us money, much like your person, you know, makes us on electricity, that's how it attracts large businesses, you can give them electricity for virtually nothing. There's no reason why we can't be bold and do something dramatic, something revolutionary, you know, step out of the box and, you know, beat that center. That's what will attract people here. With folks here, what's this city, Central Kansas, that's doing this and doing that? You'll get folks to come, but as long as we're not, you know, polluting our environment, then it's something we should definitely look into.
I think you're right, Randy. I don't think this is something that's going to come before the city commission. We don't have the space within the city for these solar farms, for the battery storage. Obviously, with these things, there's that concern of pollution, and we've seen that even with the wind turbines in the farm, the wind farms, there's pollution that is going on with that. I don't think that putting out on the internet that Salina has a large solar farm is going to attract a lot of people to Salina. I don't think that's going to be the main focus of our Chamber of Commerce. Renewable energy is great, we all need that, we can all use a break from the inflation that's taken place with gas prices and everything around us, but again, that's going to be a decision for the county commission, as we see some of the commissioners are here tonight. The county commission has to take, make that decision, and from what I've heard, it's not going to be an easy one. Everybody's going to have an opinion about that, so good luck with that, Joe.
Yeah, I think we have other things on the city side we need to discuss. Again, that's a county commission issue, that's out of the county, we don't have the space. If, and I haven't studied that, so I really don't have a clear-cut view because it hasn't come before us, so I really am not going to have an opinion on that just because I haven't had a chance to study the issue.
Apparently, from what I hear, and I don't know this 100 percent, so, the solar panels over time tend to ruin the land to where it's not usable anymore after they, if they're usefulness, I guess is what she said. So if it were some, for some reason, I'd be opposed to it. Sorry, I lost my train of thought, but yeah, I would oppose to it.
Well, I know it's something that's faced you that are on the commission and those candidates, I'm sure you've heard about it, it's the homeless issue in Salina. What help could lawmakers in Topeka and in Washington provide the city of Salina in addressing the issue of homeless in Salina? And what, if anything, can citizens do and offer out help for the homeless issue? Jerry will start.
I think we have a lot of great nonprofit in Salina that are willing to help the homeless, the true homeless that need the help, that have lost their jobs and just can't make it, and, you know, the moms living in their car, or dad living in their car because they've just had a bad situation. That's where I think the nonprofits could help. The guys hanging out on Seventh Street, most of them, from what I understand, they have homes, they just refuse to work, and they want to just come hang out all day. What can we do? You know, there's plans, I guess, being pursued to get that to go away. So I guess, from a city level, it would be, in my opinion, would be to kind of help back up and help the nonprofit agencies, the Salina Food Bank, Rescue Mission, Catholic Charities, those type of situations, or those type of places to help them, to help the homeless.
Yeah, there has been discussion at the commission level. A year or so ago, we put a camping ordinance into place, which is helping some. We're currently talking about an open container and alcohol on the street. It's amazing that things aren't quite as simple as they seem, and part of that, you ask, "What can the state and federal government do?" Well, they've put some laws into effect that actually kind of tie our hands when it just comes to loitering on public property. Now, they're loitering on private property, and an individual has a lot more rights than you do on public property. One of the things that, and again, our community is very caring. We have the Rescue Mission, Ashby House, Catholic Charities, so a lot of people come here for help, and an example of the Rescue Mission is they come here and they try to, you know, sober someone up, they try to get them back into the workforce, but if they don't follow the rules, they get kicked to the street. To me, that's a poor Plan B, and so we've got to figure out how to work with these agencies. If someone's not successful, what do we do? I've also talked about how we need to go out, whether it's our human resource, human relations department with the Rescue Mission, with the police department, and ask these people where they came from, you know, "What brought you here? How did you get here? Is there some way we can help you to get to where you have family?" So we need to go out and reach out to those individuals and try to see how we can help them. Again, we need to try to keep them off the streets. It's not as easy, it's not just a Salina problem. Obviously, it's a problem all over the country, and we are trying to address it the best we can.
I absolutely agree. This is not just a local problem, this is everywhere. I think, as far as DC and Topeka, what they can do to help us, I don't think there's a whole lot they can do. This is a local concern that we're going to have to deal with locally. Just like with some of, one of the other questions, I think instead of just looking at the topic, perhaps we should look at why. Why is there a homeless issue? Why is there a problem where people do not have a home to live? Why are these people on the streets? Why, and the biggest concern for most of Salina when we talk about homelessness is safety. Nobody wants to be walking down the street and somebody pop out of a, around a corner on them, and you don't know who they are or what they're doing, or what they're drinking, or what they're smoking. Nobody wants their children to be around that. So what do we do? Well, we set up these programs, and Salina Grace does a tremendous job with some of these folks, and as Commissioner Hopick mentioned just a moment ago, sometimes they get in there and then they break the rules and they're put back out on the street. Well, part of having rules is you have to live up to a certain standard. Commissioner Davis has ingrained this in my head over the last couple of years when I've talked with him, you can't legislate morality. He's told me that over and over again. I hope we realize there are some people who are homeless, that that is their choice. They've chosen to be there based on their lifestyle or based on where they are. Some people are there because of a bad decision or a bad choice in their life. Some people are there just simply because they can't afford a place to stay, and that goes back to some of our high rent costs here in Salina. We need to do what we can to help them with compassion, realize everybody is a person, everybody deserves love, everybody deserves help, but realize you can't force somebody to make a decision that they are not going to make for themselves. Homelessness is an issue. Is there an answer? No, I think at one of our other meetings, we said if somebody would write a book, "How to Defeat Homelessness," it would be a world bestseller. Everybody would want that book. So, but as far as DC and Topeka, I don't think they could legislate anything for homelessness.
DC and Topeka can help us with one word, money. I'm not talking $100,000, I'm talking millions of dollars. We've been focusing downtown on the homeless people. Until we focus on homelessness, there will always be new homeless people to take the place of the one or two people that we help. So until we start getting to the root causes, as far as some of those guys on Seventh Street, several of them do have jobs. My church was out two weeks ago, we talked, two guys, they work, they just like coming down there and hanging out. And that's the guy's, I mean, that may be his only social outlet. Many of them have mental illness, and I've sat there and looked at the guy who I know he was hallucinating, and he could not work if his life depended on it, but he can't get access to mental health either, and he doesn't have money to pay for the medications that he would need once he got to mental health. A lot of people need first steps. They don't have IDs, they don't have emails to get jobs, they don't have a place to get a shower, clean clothes, to go on a job interview. There are a lot of basic first steps that folks need. You have a lot of people who are pre-homeless, you know, they're slipping down the hill, they can be saved and brought back, but we've got to look at homelessness. Yeah, you're going to help the people that you see, but until you look at the big causes, you're going to realize that, you know, this is, it's a big issue. A lot of people did not choose to get this way, they ended up this way, but just like a person with depression, they get so deep, they don't have the ability to pull themselves out by the bootstraps, they don't have any more boot, they don't have anything to pull themselves up with. So it's going to be a massive community effort, but we're talking millions of dollars, not, you know, 10,000 here or 100,000 there. So if we want to spend our tax money for that, we can certainly make index.
I'll ask one more question, then we'll open it up to the public. City government, there's been talk from time to time, and now I got involved with Tom Bell years ago, about the city consolidating with county. What is your position on changing the former government to districts? I know Mr. Farber brought that up. A council, mayor-type former governments, the commission city manager form that we have now. Mr. Davis?
Those are two different options. Our current, you know, I personally like the city manager, city commission model, because you get five people who are elected one night in November, they don't become experts on sewage pumps and roads and overnight, you know. I don't really want to know what size pump that engineering needs to buy for a certain thing or how thick concrete. We pay people to make those decisions. Our city commission is a strategic board. I assumed the city had wards when I first moved here, because every city I've ever lived in did. I found that it didn't. There are advantages to it in that you get representation each, each part of the city. The big disadvantage potentially is that one ward holds a project hostage because it didn't get what it wants. So there are pros and cons, plus you have people who will move into a ward just to get elected. I mean, there are ways to game the system, but I would think that Salina has done things the right way with the city commission structured the way it is. Electing different, from different wards, you know, would not be a deal breaker for me. I mean, it's, it's, it does ensure people will have closer access to their representatives.
Oh, yeah, I brought it up a little bit earlier. I'm for a change in our form of government. Current form of government that we have has been here, brought into Salina in 1921. My grandfather just turned 91 years old. He wasn't even born when this form of government was brought into Salina. It's time for a change, and the reason I say that is not a political one. I believe that if we break our city into districts, that more people will, whether perceived or reality, they will feel their voice is heard more. Each district will have their own representative, therefore that representative answers directly to those, that segment of his constituents, instead of an at-large, like we have now, who answers to the entire city. There are people on the north side who, and I've spoken to them, they don't feel like their voice matters in city government. There are people on the, on the west side who don't feel like their voice matters in city government. I agree with Commissioner Davis, you know, that there are ways to game the system, but we have to give this opportunity to the people, and in order for this to get done, it has to go before the people, it has to be on a balance. Let the people vote on whether this is the direction they want to go or not. I would love to see a hybrid form of this. You know, we want to do things differently in Salina, let's do things differently. Let's have district representation, but let's also have a couple of commissioners elected at large. Let's keep the balance in our city, checks and balances. I would also love, and this is another topic, I would also love for our mayor to be elected instead of just passed around as a paper title from one person to another. We ran into that issue just this, this past session, when, when one of our commissioners decided not to go for mayor, and the commission had to make a decision, and truly, the commission voted your mayor in. No offense, Mayor Hopick. The commissioner voted their mayor in this past year. So there are things that we can change, and that's what I'm saying, there are ways to make a difference in Salina, and if we can get more people's voice heard, I think that's the optimum way for Salina to be.
Well, I'm probably going to take a different stance on this. I think our form of government currently works well. I understand the idea of districts. From being on the commission for six years and also from following city government for many years, I'm yet to see a commission that really said no to doing something in a certain part of the community. It's kind of, I don't want to say funny, but Mr. Farber signs say, "A voice for the people." Well, if you're voted for a district, are you still a voice for all the people or just your district? I'm a voice for the whole community and not just a district. And the other problem with Salina, I don't believe, are large enough to be, to have districts? How many times in the county elections do we have one person running? That's not an election, and you can have that person in there for too long. And, and like Mayor, Commissioner Davis said, there's people that can, will move if they're running or something, to get into a district to be elected. I believe, I believe our form of government works. I don't understand an elected mayor, where we gain on that? If two-year veteran candidates run for mayor and one doesn't get elected, do they not get onto the commission? Again, we only have six people running for a city commission, we only have four of them that showed up today. We have a problem getting people involved. We have meetings where people can come to. I think it's a perceived, a perception that we get more people involved if we district. I really, honestly, am not sure that we would. I, again, I think we, I myself, I represent the entire community. I don't just represent the part of the community I live. I don't just represent the part of the, the community I live in. We'll pave streets everywhere. We are redoing in the older parts of town, we're replacing water lines. That's not going to, that's not going to stop just because I'm not from that district.
I don't think Salina is big enough for districts. You know, if you're, if you're talking five districts, if we leave it kind of where it is now, that's 10,000 people, one person representing 10,000 people. Some of the disadvantages is, you know, if there's, say in my district, I want my street repaired and I'm going to lobby for that. I'm going to lobby for my district, not the other four districts in town. I want to have that project for me. I'd prefer to see five people representing the whole city of Salina. As far as the mayor goes, you know, how would you do that? Mayor Hoppick said, do you, you know, do you run for mayor? And if you don't, you know, you have two or three good candidates running for mayor and one person wins it, what happens to the other two? Who would have made, probably, then give commissioners not have that opportunity. I looked up the same thing Chad did last time around, because it was 2021. So it was 100 years ago that, that we switched over to the, the former government that we have now. And I just, you know, it's been working that long and it's been working well. I just, I don't see a reason to change it just to be changing something. As far as paper title, you know, I think you earn a mayorship. You have to be one of the top two out of the three to get it. Those two people earn it by votes. It's more than just a paper title. The mayor represents the city of Salina. As many of you know, my grandpa was mayor in 1984. And I was proud of the fact that he was, he was the mayor and I didn't consider it just a title. For that year, he represented Salina.
Now I'd like to turn it to y'all back here. Anybody have a question? Please raise, can you say your name and what's your question, please?
My name is Bill Beal. Has there been a dramatic increase in the homeless population? And if so, would part of that be the illegal immigrants being bussed in here?
I, I keep seeing out there that illegal immigrants are being bussed in Salina. I honestly don't think it's happening. A lot of people bring up the buses by Harbor Freight, by Craftman or that area. And I, I do know for a fact that that's where a lot of the Hispanic population goes and buys tickets and they take that bus to go back and visit family in Mexico. And then they come back via that bus. So I, I, I don't think, I think that's being perceived as people, you know, illegal immigrants being bussed into this, this town. I don't know for a fact, that'd be a good question to probably ask with the police department and what they're seeing, but I, I don't necessarily think it's a problem in Salina. Is it a problem in the United States? You ask very much of it. In Salina, I don't know that I see it.
I would say there's been an increase in homelessness, it appears. At least it's more visible right now. It could have been somewhere else where we weren't seeing them before. I have a business that's two blocks from the bus stop on Seventh Street and I drive by there at least four times a day. That, the number will vary anywhere from four to a dozen people there. And none of them appear to be Hispanic to me. So I don't believe that we have that issue here in Salina. I do agree with Commissioner Davis that the problem we have is we have a mental health issue in this, in this country. And years and years ago, the government stopped putting money towards mental health. And so we have more of those people on our street. And also, some of them do wish to live that way. So as far as the increase, I believe that probably has increased, at least it is visible to me what I'm seeing. But as far as being illegal immigrants, I'd say no.
I concur. The homelessness seems to have been brought to the limelight through questions, through reporting, that type of thing. And we do have a, a huge crisis at our southern border. Let's not downplay that. But a lot of the homeless that I have dealt with and interacted with, specifically there on Seventh Street, Seven with the Walnuts and so forth, those are not the Hispanic population that I'm seeing there. As far as bussing people in, I personally have not seen evidence of it. There are all kinds of stories that go around. But homelessness is an issue. It's, I believe it's become more visible. The more we talk about it, the more we notice things when we, when we talk about them. So I, I think that may be a question for our police department. They may have a little bit more insight on that. But homelessness and our border crisis, a lot of times go hand in hand. Perhaps out a little farther west from here, we're seeing a little bit more of that. I've seen some of that in some of our western cities. But as far as Salina, I haven't seen an increase in Hispanic homelessness.
I wouldn't really worry about the ethnicity of the people who are homeless. They're homeless. Does it really matter where they came from? 99% of the, of us in this room technically were illegal immigrants to the western coast of the Atlantic Ocean. That's how this country was built. We should be glad in a way that other people want to come here. Most immigrants coming here want to work. In fact, if they didn't work, lettuce would cost $10 a head. A lot of American industry is based on immigrants taking jobs that native-born Americans won't take anymore. I'm not saying that you should open up your gates and, and you have, a lot of people you have to take care of, but don't look down on people because they've come here because life was miserable where they lived. Our homeless are more visible because we're all in one place. Everybody knows where to go to look for them. We didn't go look under the culprit, under Iron Street over there by, by the railroad tracks before. We would have found them. We didn't go walking along the Smoky Hill River. We would have found them. So it's, you know, same, you know, the number may have gone up a little. But the number of people behind their mortgages and not having jobs and, and, you know, that's gone up as, as well. It's a little more visible and they're getting more oppressed. But it's, it's an issue we have to address. It's, it's part of the ugly truth of living in the United States.
Anybody else have another question? Yes, sir.
Clark.
I like a washing machine.
Representative Clark Sanders, there's some talk that COVID Part Two may be a distinct possibility. So if COVID comes back like it was two or three years ago, would you be in favor of any kind of mask mandates or restrictions on businesses?
May I go first? Yeah, obviously, I'm a little slanty because part of my job is keeping everybody in this room alive, myself included. We are very fortunate that we are smug and arrogant enough to sit here and talk about what happened the last time, because we weren't part of the million people who died, all right? So whatever it takes to keep our population alive and our economy going, we're going to have to put on the table. When I listen to what my parents went through during World War II and the rationing, they think we're wusses. You know, David said, just put on the damn mask and go to work, you know? We didn't have feet. We didn't have shoes. We didn't have tires. We didn't have this. All you all are crying about is putting on a mask. It may not be a mask. Who knows what we're going to need? You know, communities got wiped out because folks didn't get vaccinated. Imagine getting to St. Peter's Gate and saying, dude, all you had to do was get vaccinated, you'd still be down there. Who knows what we're going to need to do? But what Salina showed was that it was flexible enough. The city government did not lay off a single employee. Our economy survived. And thank God we live in Kansas where we were somewhat socially isolated anyway. I would hate to have been in New York City, you know, where you're living on top of people. But we made it through. So I would not worry about what we're going to do ahead of time. Just make sure that we're nimble enough on our feet, open-minded enough to come up with the best solution, whatever it is. We don't have to worry about creating that plan right now.
I thank God we were not in New York City too, where it was tyranny. I was very outspoken, many of you know this, last time this went through. I am completely against mandating the people by the government. I'm not so much against a mask. And studies have proven that masks were ineffective against this. And I know Dr. Davis, he's a physician. He understands the size of the micron particles of the virus, that those masks are ineffective. In fact, harmful in some cases. I'm not so much against masks. I'm not so much against closing down businesses as much as I am against the government telling the people what they can and cannot do. Guys, we fought a war against that to get this country started. Our forefathers said, we're not being governed by a king 3,000 miles away. And I believe it was Francis Marion who, from South Carolina, who famously said, fellas, if we're not careful, we're going to trade a tyrant 3,000 miles away, one tyrant 3,000 miles away for 3,000 tyrants one mile away. And that's what happened last time with our city commission. Our commission overstepped their bounds. They mandated where people should do for their health. They shut down businesses and I've heard that was sent down from the state. No, there were city ordinances that were passed. They were not repealed. And, and it was a shame. It was a sham. We got funding from the state and our budget looked real good because we kept getting all those state dollars. But I am completely against the government mandating what people should do. We as Americans have freedom. You may not agree with my choice. I went out and weeded my yard the other day in flip flops. People will say, that's dangerous, you shouldn't do it. And I probably shouldn't have. But as an American, I have the freedom to make dumb choices. And if you think my choice is dumb, that's my choice as an American. So short answer, I am against the mandate.
Well, I got pleasure of being mayor in 2020, so you guys all know what I dealt with. First of all, and I'm going to look at Commissioner Davis, we didn't shut down any businesses, did we? I don't think so. That was the state. That was the state that did that. In fact, I'm a small business owner. I was upset that they allowed loads of menards to stay open and all the boutiques downtown had to close. So I disagree with the way that was handled. Now, the masking, you've got to realize that we had, information was changing, not only weekly but daily sometimes. I remember in my office, we were wiping everything down. I was so tired of the lemon-scented Clorox, I could throw up. But I had, I didn't know what was happening. That was to protect myself, my customers and my employees. There's different philosophies on whether the mask helped or not. You know, we did what we thought was best. You've got to realize, again, I represent all the people. Some people didn't think COVID was a real thing. I had part of my constituents that wore a mask to bed at night. That's what I dealt with. So we tried to do what we thought was best. And I don't think wearing a mask killed anybody. Didn't have to like it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take away your freedom. But it was, it's there sometimes, not just to protect you, but to protect others that if you're carrying the virus and they have a health issue. Will we do it again? I don't know. I hope we don't even have to deal with that. But what we did back in 2020, you may not agree with, but we did the best we could with the information we had.
I think at 2020, when COVID started, it, it was kind of a scary thing. No one knew, absolutely no one knew what, what it was and what was going on. So I, I can't put any blame on, on the commission at that time for doing what they did. The only complaint I had was kind of towards the end. I think it, it went on a little too long, but I digress on that. I, I don't see any, let's, let's take what we learned from the first time and apply it if it does come around again this time. If you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you, if you want to get your vaccination and you believe that, that works, get your vaccine, vaccination, but, but don't tell me to do it, either one of them. I won't tell you to do it. So as far as mandating it, no.
We have time for one more question. Anybody can add that last question?
Okay. I've lived here all my life. I was born and raised in Salina campus. Immigration is a problem because I have a granddaughter now. I have a great-granddaughter now. I have been told by authorities that there is gangs from Mexico here, especially the Anaboteans. How do we protect ourselves from, from, from this? It seems like everybody's coming to Salina. And I do know that immigration has been out to Strident or Exide, as it used to be known, from Nigeria. So if we don't have a problem with immigration, how do these people get in here?
Strident?
If there's, if there's gang members in this town, then they need to be dealt with by the Salina Police Department. And as a city commissioner, I'm a, or a possible city commissioner, I'm a huge proponent of the police department. I've always backed the police department and I'm, they're 100% to give them whatever they need. So if they were to come to us and say, hey, we need help, a gang task force or, or we need more equipment, then, then yeah, we need to, we need to get them equipped to handle the gangs. And personally, I don't know if there's anything we can do other than support our, you know, our law enforcement in handling that situation.
Yeah, I agree with, with, with Mr. Ivy that, you know, I think we need to give our police department all the resources necessary to deal with, with whatever it is, whether it's, whether it's gangs or drugs or whatever. I have not heard of a, of a gang problem in the community. And we'd have to, I'd have to ask the police department for more information. But they haven't come to us saying, we need more help. We need to do this. So, so if there is, I'm not aware of it. But I think whatever the issue is, we need to support our police department. We need to give them the resources they need to deal with that. I know we, we have some drug issue in the community, like every other community. And, and we're, we deal with those the best we can. But no matter how many police officers we hire, we can't be everywhere all the time. And we did have a, you know, we're short on police, police officers. We've been trying to, to increase that number. We did a pay study a year ago and we've increased the pay on, on a lot of our city employees with the police department being part of that, trying to recruit more employees, police in the city.
Immigration, I am not against. I think a healthy country has a certain amount of immigration. I am against illegal immigration. We've tried to change the names, you know, of what these folks are. And the truth is, they are committing a crime by coming into our country illegally. And right now, I mentioned a moment ago, our border is wide open on the south and we do have gang members coming across and we do have terrorists coming across and we do have drugs coming across and we have sex trafficking taking place. Yes, there are gangs in Salina. I'm, I'm out in the community enough to know there are gangs in Salina. I don't know specifically about MS-13. There are gangs in Salina. The best way to combat that, and I think both of these fellows have said it the right way, we need to fund our police department and we need to support our police department. They are a, a strong line of defense between those who observe the law and those who break the law. I was very disappointed when I heard Commissioner Davis, I believe it was a Central High School graduation where he praised the young people for beginning and supporting the Sunflower Coalition. And as most of us know, one of the main purposes of the Sunflower Coalition way back when was to defund the police. We don't need that in Salina. Our commissions lately have been doing a wonderful job of funding our police department. It needs to continue that way. Our police department needs to be respected. As far as immigration, there are gangs, there is trouble, there are drugs, there is sex trafficking, there is trafficking going on in Salina. And we need to support our police department that are in dangerous, dangerous positions every day.
Lucky me, I get to address the Sunflower Coalition remark immediately. I praise the Sunflower Coalition as a group of high school students who took on a task and were successful in civic action. Didn't matter the outcome. The fact was that they got involved and accomplished something. They did revamp and improve our police advisory board. I spoke with them and I told them defunding the police was not going to work. I said, if everything you I said, if everything you want done happens, we're going to have to increase the funding to the police, not debunk them. As far as immigration, first, I mean, gangs, take time with your kids, make sure you know where your kids are. Give them options in life other than joining a gang. Most kids join gangs because they're missing that direction and attention at home. So, you know, don't let your absence be their stimulus to go into the gang. You have to support police, but supporting police means you have to call them and say, hey, there's something going on in my block. You got to find out from your kids what's going on. Everybody wants the police to do something, but nobody wants to tell them where, where the bad stuff's going on. So either get involved, you can't not get involved and get involved at the same time. As far as the location of the gangs, I don't know whether you'd be more comfortable, the gang came from Russia, Sweden, France or Germany. Doesn't matter where they come from, it's what they're doing. We had, the worst terrorists we've had in this country were homegrown terrorists. They didn't come from anywhere, all right? Oklahoma City bomber, where'd he come from? God, we should be embarrassed, Kansas, all right? So, you know, we got to worry about what's going on here. I agree, illegal immigration is the issue. Immigration itself. As far as gangs, Salina PD is always going to be too small. You need a cooperation between federal, state and local because these are regional, international gangs. One little city is not going to stop it.
All right, that is our question. And before we have the closing statements, it's one minute each for the candidates. Rosemary, you had a couple of announcements you wanted to make.
First of all, before all the candidates, I think I voice it. First of all, for all the candidates, Lee, this evening, we want to thank them all for coming. We really appreciate them giving their time this evening to inform the citizens of what's going on and answering that question. And thank Randy for being the moderator. We appreciate him so much. Remember October the 17th, we will have the state reps here at the Carver Center at 7:00 on October the 17th. And if you're able, before you leave this evening, if you could pick up your chair, put in the racks for us so we don't have to spend all evening putting our chairs away. And I want to also thank the social media, KINA and 311 for being here tonight and broadcasting this forum. Also, the Granny Brigade is not a money-making organization. We just get out and keep the public informed of what's going on with the help of our commissioners and our school board members and other state representatives and that. We need to let the community know what's going on in our community. So if you have a couple of dollars, you might put in our little jar back there so we can pay for our rent and that goes to our city. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
We'll have closing statements from our candidates and Mr. Davis wants one. Mr. Davis, please. I know Mr. Farber wants five. He can have all the time he wants.
One of my neighbors describes Salina as in the middle of everywhere, you know, be a nice city slogan. Not just geographically, but intellectually, economically, socially, educationally, recreationally. We actually have a little bit of what ever anybody needs and we have nice mixtures of it. So we have a broad appeal. The city, through its public partnerships and private partnerships, has worked on downtown, our infrastructure, business expansion, but in the next couple of years, we have to work on housing, childcare, education, homelessness, drug addiction and mental health. The city commission is the connection between youth, the citizen and the city government. City commissioners have to be able to speak with everyone and represent everyone and listen to what's being said and come up with the best decisions. Even if it means saying no to your friends or saying yes to your adversaries, it's about being able to make good decisions. I think I'm in a position to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you to the Granny Brigade for putting this on. I appreciate citizens that come out on a Tuesday night so they can be more informed about what is going on within our city. I love Salina. Salina has done a lot for my family. I moved my parents here a year ago. That's how much I trust Salina. We'll see what they say after this. They showed up here tonight. I want Salina to move forward. I don't want Salina to be stagnant. I'm not just talking about population, I'm not just talking about taxes, I'm talking about across the board. And Salina has a great opportunity here, right in the middle of the country, right at the intersection of two great interstates. We, we have the opportunity to have businesses, to have industry, to have all these great things ahead of us, and we need people who are going to make the decisions for all of the people of Salina. Yes, my sign does say a voice for the people. Thank you for that endorsement a little bit earlier. A voice for the people. And I believe the people will be heard better through some districts, through district advisory boards and how we can break that up into sections and allow the voice of the people to be heard. Salina, vote correctly in November.
Well, as a longtime citizen and as a current commissioner, I'm one that likes to talk about the good that's going on in Salina. Are we perfect? No. We'll never be perfect, but we have got, we have so much going on. Mr. Farber used the word stagnant. Salina isn't anything but stagnant. I mean, we talked a little bit, I wish we could sit here and I could talk for 20 minutes about the growth in industry, you know, about the population growth. We had a 2020 census during COVID. I'm not sure it was correct or not. All I can tell you is we are building houses as fast as we can and they are being filled. We got $25 million from the state to build more housing that's going to start hopefully before too long. So we have a lot of things going correctly in this community. We're going to work on the things that aren't perfect, but I want to tell you right now, there's not a better place in the state of Kansas to live right now than Salina. The lieutenant governor was, has been here seven out of the last nine months to talk about things that are going on in Salina. That should tell you how, how well we are doing as a community.
Thank you all for coming. Mr. Davis, Mayor Hoppick, they have about 14 years combined between them, I believe. They, they can, they can tell you anything. I want you to know that if I were to get on the commission, I want to learn. I'll fight for Salina. I'll learn everything I need to know so that I can sit up here in four years and, and know half as much as what they know. So thank you for coming again. Got signs outside if anyone wants one to clear out. Let me know.
That'll do it. Thank you very much. Have a great Tuesday.